All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'll call the special meeting of the Buchanan City Council to order. I appreciate everyone being here tonight on a Friday night, an unusual night. We're taking the opportunity, as some folks have told us before, that we don't get out on different nights or at different times, so we took the opportunity to go with a Friday night. Looks like the same usual crowd that we normally have, but I do appreciate you guys coming out as well. As normal, in our tradition, I will go ahead and start us off with a moment of silent prayer meditation and then pledge other allegiance. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, let me thank all of you for being here tonight. As you may be well aware, we had to cancel last council meeting on a Thursday night. Normally, we meet on first and third Thursdays. We had some terrible weather last Thursday, so we went ahead and canceled it because we didn't want to have our council members and, of course, our citizens out in that terrible weather. So again, I thank you for being here. What I would like to do is go ahead and begin with our agenda. Normally, we would introduce our Wesleyan College students, but of course, they're out on spring break, so congratulations to them. Our first recognized guest council is not with us tonight, as well as, you may notice, Mr. Thomas, who's called off because he is Yale. We wish him good health here soon, but unfortunately, he couldn't be with us. Mrs. Ward of Country Roads Transit will be with us soon, but she got caught in traffic coming from Elkins. There seems to have been an incident on 33.
I'm right.
Oh, I didn't see you come in. I'm sorry. I know you must have just rushed in. I could have somebody else go first. We have another guest, or if you'd like to go first, that's...
However you want to do it, I think I'm ready.
All right, well, then I would, since you're recognized first, we have Laura Ward from Country Roads Transit, and I will relieve the floor to her. If you'll notice, packet, if you're packeted, council, I think it's about the third page, we have her submitted information.
I'm not entirely sure the finks wanted me to be here because I was scheduled the last two, and there were major weather events, and then there was a wreck on my little tiny road at the house. It's a good thing I left early.
Glad you're here, Laura.
Thanks for letting me come and talk to you. I think it's important for me to come. The city of Buchanan makes an investment in public transit every year. You made that investment in country roads, but really, you're making that investment in the citizens of Buchanan and of Upstate County. Public transit is important. All of you who drove here today, might not, that might not need transit, don't understand what it's like not to have transportation to get where you need to go, to get to a doctor's appointment. Simple things like going shopping when you want to go shopping and not relying on your family. Sometimes people don't even have family to get there. We see our strongest numbers at Country Roads in people going to doctor's visits and people going for medical visits of all kinds. We take an awful lot of folks to the hospital every year. I will tell you that we are up considerably from the year before. We're up 11% in total from fiscal year 2013. So the numbers I'm giving you now are as of the year that ended last July. And everybody knows, I hope, in Buchanan, that last July 1st, we entered into a partnership with the Upstate County Senior Center, and we are now administering their transportation under a general public transportation program. We think that is a perfect fit, and it's a real model that we're trying to replicate wherever we go. Agencies combining resources to provide more than they could individually. We have, I'll give you some numbers for example. Total numbers in the whole fiscal year of 2014, we gave with our one van that we had at that point, 2,487 rides. July through December of last year, we gave 4,548 rides. And that's because of that partnership. We have additional vans here and additional presence. But, and those are about the same kind of numbers that we were seeing, slightly increased numbers from the six months before what Country Roads and the Senior Center did together. But what that did is it made a loop. We were able with those resources to have a loop around Buchanan. So we have a route van that goes all around Buchanan, goes past the bus stop, goes past City Hall, goes past the college, goes past the courthouse, goes to Walmart, the hospital, all those places that people might want to go, and goes, you know, seven times a day it makes that loop. It's very easy for someone to fly the van anywhere along that stop, goes to the Housing Authority, goes to the high-rise, everywhere people might want to go that we can think of. What's great is that we continued what we did with our one van four, with that same van plus another, which was demand response. So if someone doesn't want to go somewhere along that route, or if they live off that route and need to get there, they can call a day ahead of time and tell us that, and we can get them where they need to go. We're really excited. I know in big cities, there's bus stops everywhere, and people don't get all excited about bus stops. We're kind of transit geeks, and we're really excited about our first bus stop. So we have one to put here in Buchanan, and we're working on trying to get funding for a few more years. The first one we have is going to go out to the Housing Authority. We think that would be when people come out of their homes and have to come to a central point, they need somewhere out of the weather to stand. So that was a natural first point for that. I'm really excited. I have to tell you that the people of Upstate County have really embraced this partnership for the last year, and I appreciate that so much. On May 1st, and you will all get invitations, we are going to have Thunder's Day at Transit, and we are going to send you each individual invitations to come and ride a Transit van every month. It's wonderful for me to stand here and tell you stories, and I can tell you individual stories about people in your community that transit positively affects on a daily basis. It's completely different for you to hear those stories from them while you're riding with them. So I'm going to ask you to come and ride Transit. Come for an hour, come for all the way, however long you can spare that day, we want you to come and hear the stories from them so that you can see the true value of your investment. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
What day is that?
It's May 1st. It's a Friday.
May Day.
May Day, yeah.
Laura, I've got to tell you, and I actually have been working with Laura a little bit on the Housing Authority bus stop, and we are also, Michael Dawson and I, the city administrator, have been trying to figure out the needed bus stop situation. I can think of, the Housing Authority's a great place, and we're going to have it right there out on the road so that even the neighborhood, folks can use that and access it. It's a clear bus stop, not unlike what you would see in a big city, and it's covered so that you're out of the elements during the times that you need to be picked up. But I think we can all see the advantage in the future of having it not only there, but at the high-rise, out here on Main Street perhaps, or out on Route 20 somewhere, and along the route that Laura's already done. And I've got to tell you, I've had a lot of people come to me and express how happy they are to have that opportunity now for transportation. Because in a lot of areas, it's very dangerous as a pedestrian, and I think we could all agree, to be walking on the streets. Pedestrian safety seems to be back not as much of an importance, particularly, for instance, as an example, walking across our main streets, our main street area. So I want to thank you for that and the opportunity to continue the progression on that. And the work that you've done with the Senior Center is amazing stuff. I mean, it's really an advantage for those.
You know, they're a real gem at the Senior Center, and you guys are very lucky to have Alan Cook and his whole staff at the Senior Center and the Senior Center Board there, who, you know, bought a little outside of the box, which is part of, Senior Centers are very conservative organizations, I have to tell you. You know, you follow one path, and that's what you do. And so those of us who have some new ideas sometimes have to work together, and Alan and his board have seen that, and so we really appreciate him.
I'd just like to let you know that I see, at my work, you know, my real paying job, quite a few people come in and they do ride the bus, and a lot of them live over the high-rise. So when the weather is bad, they're very, very appreciative of the fact that they, because they don't have a vehicle and they don't have, and it might be a caregiver even riding with them, okay, that brings, that they come over to where the office is, and it's a good thing. And I'm sure that Mary Scholbers, who is like the director over there at the high-rise, is, you probably know who that is.
I've met her, yes.
Okay, she does a wonderful job over there, too. I'm sure she appreciates what you do for the residents there.
Thank you very much.
Have you charged it?
Pardon?
Do you charge people to ride?
So, yes, we do. Some answer is yes. The route van, each time you get on the route, so each way you go is $1.25. Demand response or dial ride is $2.50 each way. So if we pick you up, and it depends, and that's in the right of Buchanan. As you get farther on the outskirts, because Country Roads goes frequently to Adrian and takes people up currents and it's... So as you get farther out, the fare gets a little bit more. Now, I will tell you that as part of the partnership with the Senior Center, seniors ride that route van for free. They also get $15 worth of demand response rides a month for free. That was such a wonderful idea. That was my idea, and my staff says to me, "How are we going to track that?" And I said, "Oh, it'll be easy. We'll figure it out. It'll be fine." So that's been a little bit of a challenge. You know, it's easier on the balcony looking at it, but when you're trying to do the work. So my dispatcher frequently wants to shoot me, but we've managed it, you know. We did $15 that allows someone who lives in Adrian to come to town and get home twice a month at no charge. That, when they get here, they can then ride the route van all around all day for free, right? And then, but it allows people right in Buchanan to have three trips a month at no cost.
That's great.
So that was, you know, we had to protect that senior investment, that older Americans Act investment in the program, and we had to make sure we were satisfying those regulations on the Senior Center, so that we didn't jeopardize those funds.
Sounds like we got a bus route.
That's a wonderful thing, but now the seniors is what, 65 plus?
60 plus.
60 plus.
And, you know, it is very difficult to be all things together. So there are a few people who want to go, we have a gentleman who is not 60, who actually lives at the high-rise, who wants to go to the library, but he doesn't want to go to this library. He wants to go to a library that's farther out. And so he is continuously angry with me because he would have to pay to go there. And I'm so, and it's too much. He said, "I'll pay." He tried to make a deal. "How about we make a deal? Well, I'll pay you this much." And then he'll, and I, of course, I have to be fair to everybody I can. So he could, you know. Anyway, he's a little unhappy with me, but most people are finding the service.
Are you doing the trip to the recreation center this year again?
Yeah, to the pool.
To the pool, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to try to continue that. We tried to have certain bus stops that didn't exactly work out, but we want to try to advertise that we're going to be a couple places and see if that picks up. What we found was, and I'm sorry, I'm going to forget the name of the, anyway, we found a childcare place that wanted to take a bunch of the children there.
Mountain Camp, is it?
Yeah.
Does Mountain Camp run across from the middle school?
Yeah. And so that was where we ended up picking the most people up. We picked them up there and took them and brought them there.
How much?
The 60-year-old gentleman just had a, when you go into the, when you go into the library or to the pool, just drop him off the library.
Drop him off. Thank you. See, that's what I mean, creative.
I was really hoping to shoot this. I seen there go 50, and one more year, I could get that. Unfortunately, that's not been the case.
You know, it would be really neat one day if we just picked, I don't know how far out you guys live, but a little bit of the city, right? So we should pick all of you up on a Country Roads Transit van and bring you to a council maybe. That would be fun.
Would you take us home?
Yes.
You wouldn't want me.
We would need to extend our hours for you and everything.
So any other questions for Laura? Laura, thank you again for coming out. We apologize for the two different...
Please don't apologize. I was relieved I didn't have to come in this mess tomorrow.
Much better weather.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have on our recognized guest is Megan Baycorn. When you're packeted, folks, you'll see the Pi Day information. If you did not know, that tomorrow is Pi Day. A lot of our legislators did not know that. But Megan Baycorn is from the Union Elementary School. We were pleased, and it was our pleasure to hear from her whole entire class who came to the Consolidated Public Works Board meeting to have this approved for the Saturday event. And it was a great time. The kids gave us a lot of information, and so I will relieve the floor to Megan. Megan, thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you very much. Creative. Thank you, Council, for having me. I do teach 5th grade, and this is my 13th year teaching in Upstate County. And as a student of Upstate County to teach in Upstate County, I have, feel that I am very connected to our community and to our kids. Pi Day is a, pi is a mathematical constant that we use as a symbol that represents a constant in math of a circle's circumference, which would be the distance around a circle divided by its diameter, which would be equivalent to pi. And my students were able to look at that ratio of a numerator to a denominator, and we went really deep with that, given the snow days as well, as best we could. And we've tried to connect that to our community. So they came up with the idea of it's positively Pi Day. And we have, the students designed a T-shirt with Pinterest in mind, and we have our WVU and our St. Patrick's or Marshall. You're poisoned. We used recyclables and then measured their circumference, and we looked at the circumference and the diameter of different recyclables, and then created those jugs to collect positive change for Appalachian Impact, which is a community organization that mentors young students. We have Pints for Pi, the H2O version, and it, collecting for the Upstate County Parish House, because as we know, as West Virginia citizens, water is in need, just as canned goods are for the Upstate County Parish House. So we've been collecting water, or we're going to sell the water and then give the monetary donations to that as well. I forgot my peanut butter. I do have an allergy down there. Peanut butter for the Upstate County Parish House as well. But what kind of sparked an interest in my psyche was the visual arts. And math is so integrated into how an artist perceives a painting, from its dimensions to calculations. And so we looked at the Fibonacci sequence, which would be circles, and each circle that the artist painted had one of the diameters or a digit of pi. So a circle with a, you know, diameter of three, a circle with a diameter of one, and that random. So we painted pi. And I had requested that a couple of, I asked some favors of retired art teachers, Sally Miller Collins, David Carson, and a practicing artist at Artistry on Main, Teresa Mason, volunteered, came to the school, and painted with our students, and they got to paint pi. And those actually are on display throughout Main Street on windows. There are 12 by 12s and about 55 12 by 12 and 11 by 14s. So as you drive down Main Street, either east or west, you can get the digits of pi because this date is epic, because it's 3:14:15 at 9:26:53 a.m. and p.m. for the first 10 digits. So I've tried to instill some advocacy for being in the community, being a part of something, and showing gratitude as well when you have someone in the community you would like to thank. So our students will be hosting that tomorrow, rain or pi. And so if you're out and would like to come support, they might have some circles on the sidewalk with sidewalk chalk. Some of my girls are going to do pi for polish, paint pi on fingernails. And we also are trying to benefit a four-month-old in our community, Avery Thacker, who has a liver disease. So they're doing a very good day for pi and a bake sale. So, any questions? I want to thank you for hosting my students. They are, I have 58 days left with them before they graduate to 6th grade, so we've got a lot to work on for some.
Where are you going to be tomorrow?
On Main Street.
On Main Street.
In the rain, under the awnings.
Okay.
We had a reindeer 5K that we came to the council and spoke about, and it was really a reindeer 5K. Maybe if it rains for anymore, it won't reindeer another festival.
Consolidated was very excited about this program. We encourage it. The uniqueness of the day, of course, being very special, and having the youth or children come to us and present everything that Megan had just presented to you was a fantastic experience. And I'll be honest with you, I was never much of a pi guy or math guy. I was really hoping we were talking about apple pie or something like that, but I have learned a little bit about pi, and I appreciate, it was actually your students that taught me a little bit more about Pi Day, so.
They teach me every day.
I look forward, I will come down and have some fun with them as well tomorrow. I look forward to that. Council, do you have any questions for Mrs. Baycorn concerning Pi Day?
Going to have pi at the bake sale?
No, but the Daily Grind serves a great piece. I forgot that part. We were reading Pi Kooz. So we have Pi Kooz written that students will share as well.
It's fantastic.
You know, if I'd had a math teacher like you when I was coming up in school, I probably would have made better, much better math grades.
We had a neat experience today at the middle school. All the counselors gathered the 5th graders and did a career cafe. And so as our students were listening to NASA engineers, and it was neat to see the questions that the presenters had about the kids' Pi Day shirt, and then I heard my students talking about it. And then they related, well, we use pi when we look at, an engineer spoke about water flow that had to go in a bridge and, you know, calculating pi with, you know, pipes and different circumferences of pipes. I'm like, yes. You know, just a connection that's going to serve, you know, maybe that's going to be a motivation, or they're going to go in the opposite direction if they're going to do something.
There might be a lot of them turn out like little Jay Holland.
Can you give me the times?
9 to 11. 9 to 11. And if it would be a torrential downpour, I don't see me holding my students there for very long. If it would be a, if we have a gully washer, we're going to be there, but I don't want to have them with pneumonia the next Monday, so.
Let's just open space. No, I don't want to.
Bring your poncho.
Any other questions or comments? I would ask Jay, he was at Consolidated, and he is a pi guy. And Jay, he asked a lot of questions there, and he was on there that day.
Math is power.
It's really a fantastic time.
Well, would Jay learn that fast?
We thank you for coming, and we thank your kids for coming as well in Consolidated. And I please encourage you to continue the great job you do. I know I don't have to, but I've heard great things at Union as well and the School of Exeter, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Council, the next thing we have on our agenda, of course, Mr. Arnold, who's here tonight, so he won't be with us from the Street Waste Department, but we do have with us, with our great pleasure, Chief Chacy from our Fire Department, so I will relieve the floor to him.
Good evening. Just have a, a couple of things this evening. First of all, I want to remind everyone in the community that next Friday, the 20th, we're having a polar plunge at the boat ramp to benefit Avery. Her grandfather's a fireman, so we're, we're working, hoping the community will come out and support her time race plunge for Avery to get her, her liver transplant. So we're having a polar plunge. Last year, we worked with some teachers from the Academy School to do that, and so we're trying to do this for a community event this year, and then next year, the Fire Department is going to take over this polar plunge, has our own fundraiser, but we wanted to do something kind of for the community, and we want to get involved. One thing to be involved with is that we're going to try Avery and help one of our own guys. And we're going to take this on as our, this will be our fundraiser next year, so we're just doing it for a good cause this year.
What time is that?
7 o'clock. You can come, or lunch starts at 7.
In the morning?
Evening.
Oh, that's good.
How many people on Council have you got confirmed that are coming?
Huh? That's what we're here for tonight.
I just got over.
We do have, we do, we do seriously have several people coming up, so. When we did it for Academy School last year, it was a really, really, well...
It was wonderful.
It was a really great event.
I watched and took pictures.
Really nice thing. So we're looking, hoping to make it, when we do fundraisers like this at the motor room, we're looking for stuff that's not a fundraiser for, only for the Fire Department. We're looking for something that's...
It's going to help somebody.
We're looking for, well, we're looking for community events. We don't want to have fundraisers. We're looking for events that make people come to town and come to motels and, you know, that whole gamut. This one's for a good cause.
Yes. No ice this year, correct?
Doesn't look that way. We had it last year, it was really cold last year. Doesn't look, I don't think we'll have that this year, but... The next item, I want to ask for some, for some tolerance, and bear with me for a minute or two, I need your cooperation. As, in our budget for next year, there was, there was $50,000 that has been earmarked in that for equipment purchase. We, as I've talked to you, we were buying a rescue pumper. That was, that was our plan. And as you know, I've talked to you about the purchase of a new ladder truck. One day last week, sometimes, the old saying, sometimes a blind hole will find an apron. Well, the Buchanan Fire Department kind of found an apron. We have found a 2007 model of Sutford Aerial Truck with a 100-foot platform, identical to what we got, has a new ladder boom. It was taken back to Sutford and reworked. Just, I'm going to give you a real brief, just real brief history. Sutford Corporation makes, been making aero ladders and platforms like we have for about 115 years. Early this summer, they had a couple units that had a ladder failure, and they pretty much determined that it was, some of these units, it was due to lack of maintenance. Sutford is a very, very reputable company, probably the most reputable fire manufacturer in the world. They're a family-owned business, they're not a corporation, their, their name is on their equipment. They voluntarily took in 200 and some units that they had that were the same make, model, same components. The truck we're looking at is one of. They took it back to the factory, completely redid the ladder, which meant they put about 77 new parts on this ladder truck. Got new slides, new blocks, and it has a two-year warranty with it. The fire truck currently is, belongs to the Adelphia Fire Department, which is in State College of Pennsylvania, the only Penn State University. They're a very affluent fire department, they serve a very affluent community, and they're due to buy a new ladder truck, so that's what they're doing. We went last Tuesday, some of the guys went up, myself, and two other firemen, and we also took our mechanic. As some of you know, don't know, the Fire Department, we have our own fire truck mechanic, we have a contract mechanic who specializes, fire trucks are spatial animals, so he went with us just for a road trip. So we went up, looked at this fire truck, and we were led to believe it was immaculate. When we got up there, those guys have not disappointed us. I'm going to cut to the chase. This ladder truck, we talked to Sutford, has a market value of $650,000.
Wow.
It has a new cost price, and I've told you this before, this new ladder has a cost of about $1.3 million. I've told you before, when we buy a new ladder truck, we're looking at, I mean, we met with these folks, kicked around some numbers, and we got them down to a, they have the price, they have the fire truck listed with a fire truck broker. We contacted them before they listed with the broker, so we're not obligated to deal with the broker. The purchase price of this apparatus is $433,000.
Wow, wow.
We were expecting to spend more than that on a rescue pumper. Volunteer Fire Department, and let me say, the Buchanan Fire Department, we've had two or three meetings this week, and our guys have said, "This is a no-brainer." The Volunteer Fire Department, as you know... The Volunteer Fire Department, as you know, when we purchased our last engine, the fire department paid that. Again, to cut to the chase, the Volunteer Fire Department has agreed to share half the cost of this, this truck. These folks are holding this truck for us until next Friday, until we can get through some of our meetings. If we wanted, at that time, they'd like to have a down payment. There's some type of law with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for governing, if they're going something, selling something before they can transfer, they have to have at least eight percent down, which is, I think is about thirty-four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. I've talked to Michael about this and I've talked to Mayor briefly. Volunteer Fire Department is willing to come up with the down payment if need be, if the city wants to pay half that. And I know we can't act on this tonight, but this is a golden opportunity for the city of Buchanan to purchase a million-dollar ladder truck for two hundred thousand dollars. The Volunteer Fire Department will, has agreed to, whatever we do when we get however much money to pay our fair share and our half of this animal. This will help our ISO rating tremendously. Our ladder truck now is a nineteen eighty-six model, this is a two thousand and seven, so.
Twenty-one year dealer.
The ladder has, I believe, four hundred and eighty hours of operation. If you do the math, that's about sixty hours of operation a year. The truck itself has fifteen hundred hours on it, which is nothing for a unit of that condition. The two-year warranty is transferable to us. That makes me feel we're a warm fuzz when you're talking about buying a huge piece of equipment for that kind of money. It has a two-year warranty that Sutford has told me that they will transfer. Normally, those warranties are not, but we deal a lot with Sutford and we know those folks and they said that they will transfer that warranty to us. The officers and the business people of the Buchanan Fire Department, probably very prudent with their money, and we have been constantly, constantly thinking, you know, what about our fleet replacement? We have a five-year plan, I've submitted a copy of our five-year plan to Michael and our seven-year plan, we've done that. This will speed, this will put the Buchanan Fire Department in fantastic shape for years to come as far as purchasing equipment. This ladder truck has always been a contention for us. We've always got in the position that we couldn't afford a new one and we, our old one got to the point it was no longer operable. And instead of buying one that functioned, we had to go get one that worked and one that was several years old and we would spend two, we spent almost two hundred thousand dollars for that one and that was, that was just a Band-Aid. We have an opportunity now at the city of Buchanan to buy a ladder truck for two hundred thousand, about two hundred thousand dollars, a little over that, over a period of time.
What are your plans for the old one?
Uh, we want to sell it. Quite honestly, I have some guys that are out of town in a couple of different areas this week, attending a couple of different classes, and they're already marketing that for us. Sutford has said that that truck has a worth of about fifty thousand dollars on the open market, so. I would be quite surprised if we get that out of it. We probably can, number one, our truck's been maintained very well. It's been, it's had its annual certification done historically for years, our pump just passed its certification, so. I know it's not on agenda and I know we can't, you know, we can't vote tonight, but if you folks could give us a blessing, I'd say this is something that we think we're gonna do, we would, could certainly move forward with this. This, the money was earmarked, there was fifty thousand dollars put in capital out in the beginning next year for truck equipment purchase anyway. This is not a, something we're throwing out. We had money earmarked for a truck purchase, we're just kind of, we're still buying a red truck, it's just kind of a different red truck.
Chief, when the chief came to me with it, and you know, I had my concerns at first because of the fact that we're in the middle of our fire piece, which is two different animals here. Now, keep in mind, this is an equipment purchase that they've already allocated money for, which is also done through the Volunteer Fire Department, I'm just supplementing this. So, I would ask, I would ask of the pleasure of the council at this point whether they want to, are we gonna bless this for the chief or not?
I would say we bless it.
I think it's a wonderful, okay.
I think it is, well. We, I'm, we studied very long and hard about this. I'm very, very prudent with my own money. We don't, the Buchanan Fire Department does not make knee-jerk actions. The community can now look at our equipment, we have no bells and whistles, we buy basic stuff that function and does, and does the job. We've always had this Anguila pump of water, that, that's it for us. This will be such an asset to the community and will help, it's a benefit for the community because it takes a huge financial burden off the community in the next, in the next few years.
Just like you say, chief, it's a no-brainer.
We, we feel that it is, we feel that it is. We get, the truck comes in full complement of ground ladders, we won't need to do anything to it when we get your other, to put some of our equipment on.
How did, how did you find out about this equipment?
Well.
I mean, I mean.
You know, sometimes young college kids and their Google machines are kind of handy to have around. And that's how we.
The reason why I'm saying that is, you know, it sounds wonderful, but I'm surprised my ass hasn't jumped on it, is what I'm saying.
Well, I'm on, one, one of our college, our live-in college students we have just happens to be from Pennsylvania, he knew a little bit about this. And he was showing me, he said, chief, he said, and he was just joking, he said, here's a ladder truck for sale. He said, this ladder truck's gonna be for sale. He said, they're, they're buying a ladder truck. He said, they got more money than they have anything else. He said, they're gonna buy a new ladder truck.
Remember, I mentioned that, we sell these trucks.
So, we got to looking at it and a day went by and he made another comment. I said, well, let me see that thing. So, I looked at it and I thought, you know, what the heck? He said, he said, I hear that they're wanting to let it go really, really reasonable. So, I called the guy and asked him, his first price he told me was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This truck has a market value, Sutford, the guy from Sutford told me, he said, we sold that truck, that's a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck. When these people, when I talked to the chief and the director Tuesday, they wanted to, they wanted to, they wanted to sell this truck and list it for five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And the people in the city said, get rid of it, maybe another department can use it. We need to move on with them. They, they've got some money that they need, that they need to finish out, so that's why. So, we just kind of, it ended up to be more like we're just kind of blind luck, we kind of stumbled on it.
Uh, how much miles is on that truck?
Fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-four, I think.
Yeah.
Now, you gotta remember, hours on a, miles on a fire truck when it's setting and running on some, on some, it's a speed dial, but it's got, it's only got fifteen hundred hours on it.
So, I'll ask council.
I think it's a no-brainer.
I agree.
Okay, I'll ask.
Here's what, it's my turn, Mayor, excuse me. If we had your blessing, there's some things we need to do, we need to call those folks and say that we will be able to send them a down payment if that's, I've talked to Michael, he can go ahead and do some planning. Mayor, the floor is yours, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Then what I would do, there are no objections, I would just, without objection, I would ask that council is giving you permission to go ahead and continue the negotiations with the Volunteer Fire Department amongst our department and with Mr. Doss, to continue the negotiations and to have it brought to us by the next agenda for us to make a decision on. Is that appropriate?
That's, that's what we need to happen, yes.
All right, without objections to what we're doing, that'll do.
Thank you, folks, very much. You've done, you've done something very just for the fire department, something very just for.
I think, I think you've done it, sorry, sorry, Rocky.
I have one question. When you first.
Yes, we'll take your ride.
Okay. When you first started talking, you mentioned the fifty thousand dollars, are you gonna be using part of that to purchase this?
Well, that, that, yes, when we.
The down payment or what?
Well, no, we've, we've already discussed the down payment. I'm saying that the fifty, there's fifty thousand dollars that was appropriated in my, that I put in the budget for next fiscal year that was to go to a truck purchase anyway. So, that, so I'm, so I'm saying it's not an, it's not an unexpected expense, that was money that we had budgeted anyway, we're just going to spend it on a different, we're gonna spend it on a red truck, or just kind of a different red truck.
All right, okay.
I'm glad it's red.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief or comments?
Michael, do you have anything we need to?
No, no, I think, I think we're good. We'll have everything hashed out for council at the next meeting. One part of the decision you'll have to make is, obviously, they're holding the truck until next Friday, so we would have to get authorization from you for a monetary amount so we could cut a check so Mitch could take that up and secure that.
And don't forget that we do have a council meeting next Thursday, so we can have that down in time.
That's why they agreed to hold the truck for Friday. I explained to them the work and, I think, or we kind of, because of the weather, so that's.
We'll have that on the agenda, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, chief. Thank you for all your work as well during our tough weather times here and thank you for gentlemen, your, your farming. Next on the list is Mr. Hawley, city engineer, in your package, you'll see part of his report.
Yes, I've made just a few adjustments to it because there's been some updates, but this was in anticipation of, you know, not being here at the last council meeting. So, I typed up the bullets. There's been some movements on the generator grants. We finally received our notification from, that we have been approved. However, you know, it's fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars left in what we asked for, because I, as I mentioned earlier, there's only six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen to divide up equally. So, our fair share of, of the project, once they reviewed it, they decided that the grant application was worth eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Seventy-five percent of that was going to be paid by the federal government and the remaining twenty-five percent was going to be a non-federal share. And that's where I presented when I applied for this over a year ago, that, you know, the city was going to pick up that twenty-five percent. The good news is that the West Virginia Department, Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management is going to pick up the city's tab. So, our, our portion of this project will be zero dollars. And, you know, we'll be using the eighty-seven thousand dollars to purchase a generator for the Tenerton booster station and a quick connect fitting at the raw water intake. I thought that was some pretty good news. You know, we waited a year, but it cost us nothing. So, I'll, I'll do that every time.
And before you go on, it shows the persistence of our city engineers, they came on this female project, so congratulations to him on that.
Good job.
On the water treatment project, work continues. Chapman Technical Group, they're about eighty-five percent complete. There's not been a whole lot of movement right now because they're waiting for us to look at a tariff and a rate increase or some possibilities like that, so they're kind of on hold. That's why the numbers haven't changed since last month. The Luma fiber optic project at Jawbone, I'm just now getting back to looking at it. Looks like we're going to approve their application to come overhead in front of the public safety complex and then they're going to directional bore underneath the parking lot in Jawbone in front of Rob's Fitness Center, or formerly Rob's Fitness Center, and then go up Trader's Alley. But we just need to make sure that they're going to be on city property and we'll approve that project. I briefly touched on the cleaning and inspection report last time. It's again where I reported on, you know, the, looking at possibly getting remixers for the, the tanks to keep the water in movement, in motion, so that doesn't stagnate or the chemicals and the treatment doesn't settle out and all that. Haven't really worked a lot on it because we've had some flooding events over the past couple of weeks that we've been involved in and it's amazing how those things take up in time. McDonald's lane widening, this is one that I think everybody will be, give a sigh of relief for on, on one aspect, but kind of maybe has some bad news on the other. They're gonna advertise and bid out the project in May, but they are not going to start construction until the early part to mid, middle of June. So, the strawberry festival will not be affected. My concern is, instead of it being done in one construction season, it's going to extend over and bleed into two, because I don't, I don't know their schedule, I haven't seen it, but something of this magnitude, they probably could have gotten done in nine or ten months, but because of winter shutdowns and asphalt plants not making asphalt, this may bleed over into the early part of, of twenty sixteen. So, take the good with the bad, but that's the update on Route twenty. The utility relocations have started. I don't know if there's anything that you can visually see, but they have done that. Multitasking, still working on the storage tank, the new storage tank specifications and designs. Source water protection plan. We're having our second public meeting next Monday, seven o'clock here, city council chambers. Invite the public to attend. This is your opportunity to voice any concerns that you have, they have, on the Source Water Protection Act, Senate Bill three seventy-three, just anything to do with our water system. Now, now is your chance to do that. I want to get in front of Pam on this one because I knew that the question was coming, but they're talking about Gateway East, I believe your all's reports say that they're still about a week out, but as of seven o'clock tonight, that's why I peeked out the door earlier, those lights are on East Main Street, finally. So, yeah, yeah. It's Jerry Scott, you know, they've done all the work, but I'm excited to see what it looks like. I just looked out, going out the door and I noticed that they were on. We got a little extra money back from the incentive program, I haven't got it yet, we, you know, sent in the paperwork, I was working with Ambie later today. I originally reported that we were going to get about twenty-three hundred dollars back, but we're now going to get thirty-three hundred dollars back. So, you know, every bit of little, every little bit helps and that'll help defer the cost of the, the project. And then if you just read the last ones, nothing new to report on Sudden Link and Fiber Optic, Dave normally takes that. Flood control project has been moved. The Corps called Monday this week and said they had an appointment, come up with one of the people that they definitely want here, so that's been moved to Friday, March twenty-seventh at ten o'clock. And that's with the Army Corps to discuss the, the project as far as vegetation removal and what needs to be done on that four and a half miles of Buchanan River. Just before coming to the meeting, I was checking on the Gateway West project as if there's been any status or movement on that project, none. So, I have nothing to report, that's why I says nothing new to report there. Nothing new to report on the spill prevention response plans, it's still being reviewed. It did have an update saying that the plans were being reviewed, but no determination and nothing else reported on Corps Eight South. So, if nobody has any questions, that's all, that's all I have today.
Thanks, Jay.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Hawley?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, where'd you go see the lunch, Jay?
My thing.
Are they all the same color?
Wash your hope.
In your packets, folks, Mr. McCauley cannot make it with us, he had a long scheduled family event, so what he has provided for you is a memo of what he's been up to, is also added into your package, the collateral agreement between the city and the CBB, the joint use agreement out of the Armory, or better known as the Event Center at Version Four. And he's also added for your pleasure the mutual aid agreement and where he is at with that at this point. He did ask me to allow Mr. Doss to add any comments that he may have, so I would give the floor to Mr. Doss and ask if he has anything at this point.
I have no comments.
There you go. No comments on that? Okay, Mr. Doss.
That's another round, Mr. Doss.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate that and we do appreciate Mr. McCauley, of course, with all of his information. What you'll see next on your list, I think he also has in here a Sudden Link information, on the, of course, the rate increase that we are looking at from Sudden Link. I really don't want to go into discussions on that at this time, but we can at a later time. Also, for your reading pleasure, and I would ask that you take at the next point in this memo, it's the Open Governmental Proceedings and Executive Sessions Act, it's also known as the Sunshine Law. I'm going to ask you to take that. It's a lengthy little document, I'm going to ask you to put that into your drawer so that in the future, I would ask you to read it as well, but then put it in your drawers for future reference as we go into discussions in executive session. And it also discusses how we do business as a council. It's also for regular meetings as well, but is our council. As for future reference, when we meet it, it seems that we've had a couple of issues with that, I hope that no longer be an issue. All right, moving on from there, in your correspondence package, you have the Country Roads Transit Letter requesting a budget appropriations for fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. You also have the Strawberry Festival thank you card regarding the city support that we did with Carolong for the strawberry festival. Any questions or comments on that? We appreciate the thank you card and of course, we always appreciate the strawberry festival and the hard work that that board does, being an all-volunteer board, not an easy thing to do and I'm looking forward to this year's seventy-fourth strawberry festival and of course, next year's seventy-fifth anniversary. Now, what anniversary is that? Is that Diamond? Is that, what is seventy-five?
For the strawberry, seventy-five years since it started.
But what's the?
It's a diamond.
Diamond is fifty, isn't it?
Silver, gold, and diamond.
I don't know. I won't bet.
Stone or metal. It's, and I don't know what it is because I haven't been there that long, but sooner or later, hopefully, God's willing, I'll be there. All right, that's your correspondence. In your packets also, you have your consent agenda. We have the approval of the minutes of the meeting from February seventeenth. Uh, we also have the regular meeting of February nineteenth and the meeting from February twenty-fourth of twenty fifteen. We have the approval of the building and wiring permits, approval of the payment of the bills, and approval of dangerous dog complaint form. Um, does anybody wish to have any of those items taken off the consent agenda for the discussionary vote? Carrying on, then I would ask for a, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I still have.
I have a motion from Mr. Pugh. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mrs. Kupari. All in favor, say aye. Aye, post in sign. Motion carries. Moving on from the consent agenda, we have strategic issues for discussion and vote, and that's the recommendation letter for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen general fund budget and various budgetary items. I'm guessing that that is our illustrious city administrator, Mr. Doss. I will leave the floor to you, sir.
You would've had a letter, but, um, I guess you all could live without me, so you postponed the meeting till tonight, so I'm back in town. So I'll read my letter to you. Uh, when last we left, the, the general fund budget, we essentially have about three items that still need some direction, so we can wrap that up and get that submitted back to the state, um, by the end of the month. Um, so I'll just go ahead and read my letter, and of course, all this is open to discussion, um, and then we'll talk a little bit about it. Mayor Edwards and members of city council, after careful thought and consideration, the following items represent my budgetary recommendations for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen. First issue, Buchanan Police Department. Uh, the city of Buchanan appropriated an additional one dollar per hour across the board pay increase for our officers and staff, excluding Chief Gregory. This will enable us to provide competitive pay levels for our officers in anticipation of maintaining continuity and retention of our law enforcement staff. Second item of recommendation is the Upshur County Development Authority. Uh, the city of Buchanan appropriate twenty-five thousand in support of economic development for the greater Buchanan-Upshur community. The remaining fifteen thousand of the forty thousand requests shall be considered at the end of the calendar year or beginning of twenty sixteen. During the aforementioned time period, the city of Buchanan and Upshur County Development Authority will work closely to develop a list of attainable goals and objectives, which will lend support to the remaining appropriation request of fifteen thousand. The final item, Upshur County Convention and Visitors Bureau. The city of Buchanan modify its hotel motel formula and ordinance to reflect a seventy-thirty percentage split. The seventy percent allocation for the Upshur County C V B and thirty percent to the Consolidated Public Works Fund. This will neighbor the Upshur County C V B to provide additional marketing and advertising to promote our community while still maintaining revenue funds to successfully support areas such as beautification, parks, and recreation, as well as maintaining adequate staff levels. Our great city and wonderful community must continue to encourage development and promote ourselves as the crown jewel of the corridor. It is my expectation that city council will strongly consider these recommendations and provide clear direction so that we may finalize our fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen general fund budget and submit it to the West Virginia State Auditor by the end of March twenty fifteen. If these recommendations are sufficient, I anticipate providing a general fund budget for approval at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting, Thursday, March nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Um, I would, um, I would entertain a motion to accept the recommendations of our city administrator as he has read them.
Second.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
I have discussion.
Okay, um, that's all I did.
Uh, well, okay.
Uh, discussion.
No, I, I have one question. Uh, Michael, did anybody from the parish house come to us and, and request money for the parish house this year?
Uh, not had any requests from them.
The reason I'm asking is because I met with a member of the parish house's staff this week, and they have a problem there with spending money that the police officers, uh, actually are taking people that they don't consider to be jail people, but they need a place to stay overnight. They used to take it to the ministerial association, but now they're referring them to the parish house, and they are paying for them to spend, stay at Baxter's Motel or something. They've spent about ten thousand dollars this year on this program, and they don't have it. Uh, they did go to the county commisters, and I thought they were gonna be coming to us too, but she said that the far majority of that comes from the city officers and not the county officers. And they are just asking for some relief in some form, a little bit of money or saying, when they run out, if we can give them something or, because, uh, they are doing it, and it's a community service, and our officers are asking them to do it, and that's what I wanted to bring up on that.
Well, I'd say that, I mean, we're, we're this far along in the budget process, that if there's, and we've not received any letters, as, as far as I know, um, that would you encourage them to write a letter to council? And it's certainly something that you all consider when we, we do our beginning of the year, uh, end of the, end of the year, beginning of the year appropriation in January. I'm not January, I'm all over the place. It's, I'm still getting back. It's July, in July, so.
Thank you, sir. Call in a question? Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post in sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Doss. Um, that brings us to our comments and announcements. Uh, Councilwoman Alba.
Glad to have y'all back.
Thank you.
And, um.
You're welcome.
And it's been a, um, a nice week.
Okay. Okay, did I?
Is that it, is this all?
That's it.
Thank you so much for that input, you know. Uh, Mrs. Science, please.
Well, I'd like to say that there was a field of robins, um, across the road from my house up on my hill by the mason's, so that's a sure sign of a current.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Science. Mrs. Kupari.
I just wanna thank anybody that came out to see me on a Friday evening.
Yep.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Pugh?
Well, the robins, uh, out significant, but also I can't wait to see the streetlights under a bed of snow.
Hey, hey.
We have an Easter snow to go yet, so.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Seven days.
Uh, I don't think I've got anything else. I did, but I can't remember what it was.
Okay, well, maybe you'll think about it, 'cause I'm gonna give Mrs. Alba one more chance. She forgot something. We've got a limited time. I, I would like to challenge Ev, Mayor.
Ma'am.
Michael Doss and, uh, members of council.
No way, I'm going in that river.
Come on, come on.
I will be there.
If you do it, I'll do it.
Ooh.
Mayor.
I will be there supporting you. I like that.
We tie a rope around.
Unless, as long as it's about thirty-two degrees.
You only got a plunge, you come right back, you have blankets to go around you.
I'm an old lady. I don't have to wear that.
Don't know about that.
I take pictures.
We'll have people there for that, ma'am, so.
They won't let you go to cornacar rest.
Are you gonna have judges this year for this costume and all that stuff?
Uh, I'd like to, um.
Costume?
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of them do costumes and stuff.
Cool.
Um, I'd like to add that, uh, we've had a very eventful week, and we had a very eventful week last week, here in the city. Uh, but this week, Mr. Doss and I had the opportunity to go visit, um, at the Municipal League of Cities in Washington, DC. And I've gotta tell you that, um, the things that are going on in the U.S. nation, um, amongst cities, large and small, are really, really, um, energized and, um, full of a lot of great ideas that, uh, we were able to garner a lot of information from, and I look forward to advancing to you as we go through. Um, I could not go through the whole thing with you right now, 'cause there was just so much information that was garnered, but I will tell you the highlights of our, our trip. One of which is, of course, our visits with the Senators Mansion and Capito. We went into their, to their offices at Capitol Hill, and we had, we went in with an agenda in mind. We went in with four things in general to be looking at, one of which, of course, is the completion of Quarter H and the importance of it here at, for Buchanan. But more importantly, what we wanted to get into their minds is the fact that we need to become, or we could use it as a regional hub for something here in north central West Virginia, considering the unique location that we are in. Um, we discussed quite a few things, considering gas and transportation being the most important of those. They were very well attentive, and they were very happy and impressed with the fact that we came in with ideas on how that could be effective here, uh, particularly because Elkins has not done so yet, neither has Weston or any other forum here. Keep in mind, Weston's on the top of the hill, I mean, at the bottom of the hill, and, and, uh, Elkins is on top. There being a major issue with that clover leaf at, at, uh, exit ninety-nine, um, we could be ideally located for C N G. What we found out is that it takes one full C N G tank to go from Fort Royal, Fort Royal.
Front Royal.
Front Royal Port, fifth largest port on the east coast, cuts off three and a half hours trip, first of all, but it's one full trip. They could offload whatever trailer, tractor, trailer they have and move on, um, and go back, so they, it's really cost-effective for them. The other thing is that we discussed is a major truck stop that could be done here, one of these modern truck stops, and not only do you see N G gas, but also have the unique ability for diesel engines to be turned off, semi-truck diesel engines. I don't know if you guys have ever been to a truck stop or know anything about commercial trucking, but in order for them to stay, um, there or stay warm, have electricity, do whatever, they have to continually be running their trucks. They have these new truck stops now that it's like a drive-in movie theater thing. You pull up, you pull out this big box, comes to your window, it has a TV, it has internet access, it has an air conditioner, it has a radio, it has everything you would possibly need to have your truck and turn it off, saving fuel and energy, which they were really impressed with. I think, um, we asked them, of course, to keep us in mind, if anything comes along that, um, across their tables or desks that may help us facilitate that. Now, one of the senators aides told us that they do get quite a bit of, um, businesses asking about how can they locate here, and they were really impressed with the fact that that may be one way that they could do that. The next thing that we did discuss that I'm really excited about as well is the, uh, recreational complex that all of us are aware of. Again, a regional, regional recreational complex. They were very impressed with that idea as well, because of the fact there is no such thing around here. We would attract, of course, all of the tournaments and everything that would be coming here. Um, now, keep it in mind that the pork is out of Washington, DC anymore, so it does take a cooperative effort between the county, the Board of Education, uh, all of the citizens of County, Upshur County and Buchanan, and the county to facilitate such a project. They were very impressed with that, and they loved that idea as well, and they're gonna help us facilitate that. Um, the last thing that we, we would like to discuss with them was the R two six two oh one project, and becoming a certified arts community, which is something that another group or has been discussing, and we were able to, and on their behalf, help facilitate. They were very impressed with that as well and thought that they may be able to help us with that, particularly with a grant that we are looking at now, uh, well, the group is looking at now, the R two six two oh one group is looking at, and that is a national endowment for the arts grant to help that project. Um, the last thing that I was very happy to discuss with them, of course, is the Bicentennial of Buchanan, the twenty sixteen bicentennial. They were unaware of that, um, and I could not help but be in the historical context that we were in, um, particularly when we were at the White House and at the Capitol, the War of eighteen twelve. Don't forget, that would've been four years after this, or four years before this city, um, was chartered by the state of West Virginia. They called it Plaid, Plaid, P-L-A-I-D. And if you really wanna know what that is, it's out of the corner here at City Hall, tells you about the history of how that works, and that's what Virginia does. But think about that. We had just finished the battle with, uh, with Britain to make sure that we maintain the United States of America, and not more than four years later, we establish ourselves as a city here in Virginia at that time. So, um, they, um, they did not commit to any events for that, but they, um, gave us every indication that they would be more than happy to down here, particularly Senator Capito, of course, she was very excited about it, and the seventy-fifth anniversary of the strawberry festival. So, um, we felt, and that was just, that was the main highlights of what we discussed with them. We did not have much time. We did meet with each of the senators. We met on average, uh, well, with Senator Capito, we met for a good twenty minutes, with Senator Mansion. We met with him, well, I don't know how long the walk was. We got to his office about ten minutes early, okay? Luckily for us, 'cause we weren't sure where we were going, so we got there early, and just as we got down to sit down, we were gonna start reading the newspaper, whatever, just to pass the time, or take our breath, 'cause there's a lot of walking going on there. Senator Mansion comes out and goes, "Come with me." So he takes me and Mr. Doss all the way back, the way we just came, which could've been about a mile, downstairs through this tram thing, all the way back out to the, uh, the Senate side of the building, and, uh, the whole time, while we're in this tram, and as we're trying, as I'm trying to talk and walk this fast. Keep in mind, it's two of tall and got big strides, so I'm kinda jogging along. You know, um, but we did get to sit, sit down and have a chance to talk with him. He was very excited about everything we presented. Um, then he passed us off to one of his aides, um, one of his main aides, uh, Ms. Clarence West, which I wanna give a shout out to, he was a very nice young man. Um, and we went all the way back, now, this'll be three trips, went all the way back to Senator Mansion's office, and we sat down with him for a good thirty minutes and presented him with all the information we had. Um, I gotta tell ya, it's, it was unique, it was fascinating, and we, we were able to garner a lot of support.